We will begin as we often do or always do with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise to the floor in a pledge to be.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You now have a public comment, and I understand Mrs. Jarboe would like to address the board. Welcome.
Can I come to the microphone?
You do, wherever you feel comfortable, Mrs. Jarboe. That's fine. So just introduce yourself and then you can proceed.
I'm Abigail Jarboe. I live at 416 Maple Street, and I've lived here since, I don't know, eighty-seven, something like that. Now, I have heard from some people that Lebanon County is corrupt, and I hope that is not true, but that is what I've heard. And I am not happy about some things that have been happening. Two law enforcement people came to my house asking for people I have never heard of. They said they were told that this person or persons was living in my property. Well, right now, the only one that lives with me is my dog, and nobody else has lived there since July. And the person that lived there in July moved to Texas, so he's not around. I did not recognize the names of the people that they were asking about, and I am not happy that somebody told these people, law enforcement people, that this person was living in my house. Whoever told them that was either highly misinformed or lying, one or the other. And I do not appreciate being bothered by law enforcement when I have done nothing wrong. Now, I am very displeased. Now, subsequently, I went to the police station and the sheriff's office to try and find out what's going on. And I was told that somebody I do know has two warrants for his arrest. Well, he wasn't living in my house anyway. So when I found that out, I went to where he is living and asked him to come back with me to turn himself in, and he refused. So I am wanting the person that said this false business prosecuted for violating my constitutional rights. And there's more, but I think it more involves the city police than it does involve you, so I won't go into the details. However, I would like to say, I'm sure you have heard all the complaints about the different weather disasters that are going on, and nobody is saying why this might be happening. Well, God says, if my people, which are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven cleanse their, or something like that, and heal the land. Now, nobody's saying that. Nobody is saying, why don't we repent of our sins and get right with God, and then maybe a lot of this trouble would go away? And further, I would like to say that I do not appreciate the fact that people are not paying attention to Jesus Christ. He died for our sins the way the Bible says. He was buried. He rose the third day. More than five hundred people saw him at once, and he is the answer to our problems, but nobody seems to want to listen to that. Nobody seems to want to hear it. So I'm bringing it to your attention, and I ask you to please read, believe, and obey the Bible, starting with the Gospel of John, King James Version. It was written that you might believe that Jesus is the Christ, the Son of God, and that believing you might have life through his sin, excuse me, have life through his name. Now, further, I am very bothered because apparently Jade Genetto is harassing me. At least, that's the impression I get. I took a letter for her and her mother to her house. And then I took a, and in that letter, I said that I hope you will get together with the father of your children and make arrangements, because they've been keeping him, or at least Jade has, from visiting his children, and I don't appreciate that. And so I said, I hope you'll get together with him, but if you won't, I'm willing to sell a house to get the money to get a lawyer to have him get his children. So I am extremely unhappy about that. Now, I'll be taking up more in detail with the city council, but I am extremely, extremely bothered. Then somebody called and said that I had this father of the children at my house helping me unload groceries. That is patently false. I had somebody at my house who was taking stuff out of her car to put on my porch, because a cop had pulled her over, saying her car was too full. But that is an old lady, like seventy-one years old. She's also very bent over, and to possibly mistake her for Corey Blanco is ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. He's young, he's tall, and he's athletic. She can hardly walk. I mean, really. So I feel I'm being harassed, and I would like you to do anything that can be done to stop this ridiculousness. And secondly, I would like to know who I would go to to find out if I could get these warrants dropped and how much it would cost. Anyone here could do that or not?
I think your third floor would be a place or the.
Third floor?
Third floor.
What's on third floor?
The courts. What are they? Oh, domestic. Yeah, so it's court-related, so that would be the third floor.
Are they both domestic relations, or do I have to go somewhere else? I see. Well, anyway, I'm irate, but I'm not very irate, but I'm a little irate.
You're on the verge.
What?
On the verge. But we'll refer what we can to our solicitor.
Thank you. So thank you very much.
Okay. Careful walking out there, Mrs. Jarboe.
I know. I walked down from my house, so I know.
All right, we're looking for approval of the minutes of our January fourth meeting.
Motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes. Are there any additions, concessions, or corrections? Hearing none or all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Close same signs, so move. We have Mrs. Noonan's treasurer to record. Morning.
Seats on January sixteenth and seventeenth of two million nine hundred and three thousand twenty dollars and seventy-nine cents. That brought us to a total cash of three million four hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and five dollars and seventeen cents. Our expenditures this week were two million nine hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-seven cents. Our tax claim was fifteen hundred dollars, and we have a balance of four ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-three thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventeen cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasures and for subject to other.
It moved in seconded. Any questions for Mrs. Noonan? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Close same signs, so moved.
I guess I do have a question. Sally, before the meeting, you told me you had to use some of our funds, but it has the full amount here from resources.
It might be marked to the side. That's what we had before today. That was yesterday. Yeah, I mean, yeah, that would have came up yesterday, so that would have been before I used it.
Okay, thank you.
March can't come quickly enough.
You're right.
Good morning, Michelle.
Morning.
Introduce yourself and you may proceed.
Chelsea Nady, Director of Human Resources. Under resignations and terminations, Amber Smith, caseworker two in children and youth, resignation effective January seventeenth. April Connor Core, administrative assistant one in domestic relations, termination effective January fifth. Bruce Lee Torres, collections officer in probation services, rescind offer of employment effective January second. And Matthew Rothgaber, full-time FD Sheriff, Sheriff's Office, resignation effective January twenty-third.
Motion to approve those resignations and terminations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Close same signs, so moved.
Under leaves of absence, Corey Saracini and Information Technology Services, two-week paid leave of absence, effective December twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-three to January eleventh of two thousand twenty-four. Lucia Miranda, domestic relations, six-month intermittent leave of absence, effective December twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-three, with an expected return date of June twenty-sixth of twenty-four. Holly Whitmer from the Lebanon County Correctional Facility, an additional thirty-day leave of absence, all unpaid, effective January eighth of two thousand twenty-four, expected return February seventh of two thousand twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve the leaves of absence as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve those LOAs. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Close same signs, so moved.
Changes of status, transfers, and promotions. Morgan Ernst, promotion from caseworker two in children and youth to child abuse investigator at the rate of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents by weekly, effective January twenty-first. Rachel Bradley, promotion from office support one at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility to administrative assistant one at the rate of one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-one cents by weekly, effective January twenty-second. Shannon Pascal, promotion from assistant public defender two in the public defender's office to first assistant public defender at the rate of three thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents by weekly, effective January twenty-second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Close same signs, so moved.
Under other transactions, the Lebanon County Correctional Facility would like to hire the following eleven full-time correctional officers, all at the rate of twenty-two dollars and seventy-one cents per hour, all effective January twenty-third, and that is Anna Mary Geiger, Adelise Torres, Jamelle Glover, Ashley Jones, Justin Spangler, Rachel Rossi, Kayla Blatt, Ross Sadzan, Devin Weaver, David Santana, and Connor Werny. The Prithonatary's office would like to hire Julie Mar LaBarbera as a general clerk C at the rate of one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-seven cents by weekly, effective January twenty-second. The public defender's office would like to hire David Long as an assistant public defender two at the rate of three thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents by weekly, effective January twenty-second. And the sheriff would like to hire Jessica Marks as a clerk typist A at the rate of one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-four cents by weekly, effective January twenty-second.
Make a motion to approve the new hires and rehires as presented.
It's been moved in seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none or all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Close same signs, so moved.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Avira Gonzalez, Dominique, an interpreter pay stipend of one thousand five hundred dollars annually, effective January twenty-second. Mitchell Doughty, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the jail, a one-time five-year longevity payment of one thousand dollars, effective January twenty-sixth. John Flint the Third, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the jail, one-time five-year longevity payment of one thousand dollars, effective January twenty-sixth. Byron McDaniel's, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer slash private first class at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility, one-time three-year longevity payment of five hundred dollars, effective January twenty-sixth. And Samantha DiAdamo, longevity payment, probation officer one in probation services, one-time three-year longevity payment in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents, effective February ninth.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those salary board transactions. Any questions? Hearing none or all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Close same signs, so moved. Thanks, Michelle. I was pointing behind you, sorry. And this pointed. Morning, Congress.
Morning. So I just broke down a summary.
First of all, would you please introduce yourself and then you may proceed.
Craig Zemias, Lebanon County Conservation District, urban land preservation specialist. So I'm here to certify the funds to go to the state to get matched, so we can have more preservation dollars. So I just broke down where our funds come from. So I have there the township donations. And then the, on the right of that, you see the total municipalities, the ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty. The total private donations received this year were three thousand two seventy-nine forty-one cents. And then this is also private donation, but I separated it. Esther May Martin had passed away and left part of her estate to us, and that ended up being seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So we have a large chunk this year, which is why it's so much larger than previous years. Previous years was around two hundred to three hundred thousand. This year, the total would be one million ninety-four thousand seven hundred and forty-seven.
Awesome.
So not clear to answer any questions.
Okay, well, let's get a motion on the floor first.
I'd make a motion to approve.
And I will happily second it.
Okay, happy second. Is there any, any questions for Craig? Any discussion? Guess it's pretty clear. It's gonna be good, good numbers there, so I'll ask for all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved. Easy peasy, Craig. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Good for sure. Yes.
Real.
So we will suspend our meeting and convene the election board with the chairman.
I will call meeting eleven and the board of elections to order. And you want to walk us through the agenda, please.
Sure.
Do a quick recap of two thousand twenty-three, some of the things we're going to be looking at for two thousand twenty-four. We have various capital proposals to discuss today. A couple of challenges that came up there. I just want to prep you guys for this next crazy year. So two thousand twenty-three, overall, election day went great. We're pretty pleased. We made one change that'll be relevant to the board coming back, is that we went from about eight to ten canvassers to about twenty-five. So we were able to finish up before lunch this year, last year. So I'm very pleased with that, and we'll get more into that later, because we're gonna be seeing a significant jump in those numbers for the spring. But overall, I'm pretty happy. There has been a lot of major legislation that has changed or court cases. Everything that I thought I'd be coming here to update you with has been overturned by another court and stopped. So there's things that are in, into the courts, but nothing really updated with. For this upcoming year, we have a few things to chat about. The first is that I'd like to start a nursing home initiative this summer. We used to go to nursing homes in person, sign people up the register. That was pre-mail-in ballot, so that wasn't really an option. But since mail-in balloting, since Act Seventy-Seven, we haven't had the staff to be able to go do that, because we're doing mail-in balloting in the office. So this summer, what we'd like to do is take some volunteers that we have through some of our canvassers and poll workers, and at least one internal staff, get them in the nursing homes and set up appointments and do meet and greets in nursing homes and question and answer period. So all of you are invited to participate in any of those, but we'll have to do that this summer. That's on the horizon, and a big part of that is to answer any questions that people have regarding how to register, are they registered? And to make sure that the nursing homes aren't being overly proactive in assisting nursing home residents in processing their paperwork. Also this summer, I was hoping in January, but it looks like it'll be in May, we're gonna be doing an in-depth dive at all our polling place paperwork. There are things that we need to do to make sure that we have current contacts. There's a lot of turnover at some of these facilities, but especially the ADA audit. We do do an ADA review every year, but we're gonna be doing a very in-depth ADA audit this summer by taking bubble levels out to parking lots and measuring tapes at doors and the whole nine yards. So we have to have that all signed off on eventually by you, but it's a very time-consuming process. We're bringing in a trainer from Dogton County at no expense. He's gonna teach us the right way to do this, not just the guesstimate way, but how they've been successful in passing those audits in other counties. That's part of the holdup, is getting that coordinated with the trainer. So rather than do it ourselves and guess, and what we think is about right, we'll bring in the guy to teach us the right way.
Will you be, with the permission of the building owner, will you be marking the ten-foot? Because so many times, people from inside are confused between the door housing the machine versus the door of the building where you enter.
So that, we, because we'll be there in July. We probably will not. And there's a bit of an arc to that, too. Where does the ten-foot actually come from? My old polling precinct, we said the ten-foot was from the table where you signed in, and that cleared out a hallway down to the front entrance, and then that was a very convenient spot to let everyone then just be right there at the entrance. I know other polling places aren't so clear. We, we're gonna be, we could note that in our paperwork if we see that there's a problem with the layout that would complicate that decision. But my focus, honestly, is just making sure we're compliant for wheelchair access and things like that, basically. There, we have some paperwork that says that it all is, but I want to see with my own eyes and get it exactly measured out. That's a good point, though. Like, we could add that to the paperwork.
Over the years, it's been the one thing that I've had to discuss with the people when I go around to the polls.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Oh, I, I hear you. The ten-foot rule and the, and there's a sign in my yard. Yep, yep. In a few weeks, we'll be having preventive maintenance on all of our equipment. There'll be a team coming from ESNS over to the warehouse. They'll be taking apart and inspecting every piece of equipment we have. The runback team is also coming on site the same week, and they'll be down the hall here looking at the mail sorter. So that's all routine, all built into the contract, so no expense to us. We're already hearing in the field that we're gonna lose a handful of judge of elections. So so far, nothing that, that isn't normal turnover for an election, but it's a bit early in the cycle. We've already been hearing that. So nothing of concern yet, because we're, we were getting it early enough. It's not the week before. We have time to replace those. But I'm curious to see if that's a, that's a warning for the presidential year that maybe some people are dumb. But so far, so good. Hopefully, just unusual, a few came in all at once. The numbers that are coming in already for the presidential are significant. We're up about seventy percent in mail-in, or in registration processing. That is a lot more paperwork, and it's not really moving the county numbers. It's a lot of people that are filing paperwork because maybe they don't know they're registered, and they aren't, or they just want to change parties. There's a lot of movement early on with that. There's a lot of people starting to push direct mail pieces, which we'll get into later, to warning people that there may be an issue with their registration. There isn't, but it causes people to question us about it. So there's a significant jump already in the paperwork, and it's gonna be getting, it's going up and up as we get closer to the election. And those numbers, the big number I would imagine you're gonna ask about is the mail-in voting change, because we're not looking at a big change for pure registration numbers. A small increase, of course, we'll expect, but for mail-in voting, we're probably gonna come close to doubling that number this time. So that's relevant to some of the capital proposals we're talking about and why we want to keep that large number of canvassers for election day. So, so.
May I ask the question? Sure. Double, meaning what's, what's the base of?
So we're look, on paper, we had, we, we have like close to twelve, but in practical terms, we're looking like eighteen, eight thousand or so in the last year. But it was municipal year, numbers were down. So we're looking at sixteen to eighteen thousand this year. So with, so that's gonna impact election day for you and me a lot. So that's something to bear in mind.
Let me just clarify, the seventy percent in inquiries about registration or?
Actual paperwork coming through. You know, people have, people getting a direct mail piece from a third party and saying there maybe something wrong with your account or your registration. And so they hop on the state website and they just fill out paperwork again, and then we get double paperwork. So it's a lot of that kind of stuff. But there's also the new driver, the DMV law, that's pushing a lot of registrations our way. And it's a lot of paperwork, but again, it's not really changing the numbers for the county. It's just a lot of stuff that has to sit in process. Doesn't make a big difference for us so far. So capital proposals, we have a few things to look at. This is for the year. Hopefully, this is, hopefully, this is the last time we gotta talk about this year. The first is, since I started, actually during my interview process, one of the things that I was looking at was personal management software of some kind, something beyond just an Excel spreadsheet that we could use to manage our poll workers. There are a lot of software packages out there, a lot of very small companies that have some interesting options, but there is one nationwide, very well-respected group called Easy Vote, currently used by Delaware County. The software package is six thousand dollars upfront, and that's your cost, five thousand, and then a one thousand dollar training fee. They import all of our data for all of our poll workers, students, canvassers, rovers, everything. And the software manages that. It handles, it spits out our numbers for payroll. It automatically, through the software, we can text message and email them or produce letters for direct mail pieces. It's a few clicks. It's no mail merges anymore, none of that. Click, 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 and two minutes later, you got a text message going out to them. So it's very appealing to me. I think it's a very low price point. This comes at a good time, because our shell is leaving, and she is a whiz with, with this stuff. This would be a good time to transition that, because we can get it all in the software. There'd be no extra charge for the training with the software. They would train us and the new people next, you know, hopefully next month when we find somebody. And it would just be a big step up for us. So that's my proposal. I have the Easy Vote here. Now, a twist on this is that Easy Vote also offers campaign finance and petition tracking. That's a separate module. It's an extra three thousand dollars for that. And what that, that is, from a database point of view, similar to the poll worker, but from your perspective, I think it might be very interesting to consider, if not now, definitely in the future, where that you could submit campaign finance reports directly online. Anyone in the county could, or you could give them to us, and then we would use the paper copy to submit it online. You'd have an account set up. It's all in the clouds, so there'd be nothing for IT to manage, just be all managed on their end. And there'd be just a link set up on our webpage to go to the campaign finance database. And then, if you used that, you would get automatic reminders for all of your reports. So you would be generated an email. I, I don't know about text, but definitely an email would come to you that says in three days or five days, whatever we set it for, you have a campaign finance report due. That would be.
I like it.
I really.
I used it for the state years ago. I mean, it's been around a long time, and it's a very handy tool.
So that is, I have some urgency with the poll worker software. This module, we can add at any time. If you're interested, we can get it there right away. We don't have a municipal this year, so it's not as much pressure to keep track of all that stuff as we normally would. But it would be interesting to add that as well. I'd like to see it in place for next year. If you would like to consider it for this year, it's all the same to me. If we do them at the same time, it saves a thousand dollars on training and implementation. Because we do them separately, there's that separate, there'd be a separate fee next year.
Can you remind me what you have coming up on the ballot locally, township supervisors or anything?
No, no, it's state level and remote.
School board.
Nothing.
So next year would be appropriate then.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion for the six thousand dollar direct mail text training package at this point.
Motion on the floor.
Second, I'll second that.
Motion second. Discussion, questions, please?
Covered by the grant.
This would be covered by grant. What work are we?
Any other questions, comments? None? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Get that?
Right.
Do we want to consider the other?
I'd like it for next year, but I, I don't know, is it worth it saving a thousand this year by putting two thousand out? Or do we pay the three thousand extra, and will the price go up?
It'd be three thousand for the base, one thousand on top of that for the implementation next year. That would be rolled in.
And if we don't have local positions on the ballot, it wouldn't really get used much this year. So I was thinking, wait, next year?
Pretty neutral.
Or can we authorize it now for next year? I mean, would that be appropriate?
If we have the, because of the grant, this is all covered by grant. So because of the grant, if we rolled it together into one, I think we'd be okay. We have grant, we have a high grant ceiling. I, I came in thinking, just space them out, but it saves us a thousand bucks maybe.
Considering the current rate of inflation, you know, is it a good idea to invest now?
You know, it's a gamble either way.
Right, if we know.
Just because we just voted, we motioned, voted, and now we're, you know, we're considering it already. So.
But it would be a separate. It could be a.
Yeah, I know, I understand. We could have done it in one, if there was. I'm fine either way.
A motion to invest in the additional software at this time, if some interest.
I would like to invest in it if we can time it so we can purchase next year's, but include it all together and get the discounts. Am I making sense with that? Um, am I making sense with that?
The discount is not really a discount, it's a savings in training.
Yeah, savings in implementation training.
I'll second the motion.
And uh, second, uh, just just to clarify, you're saying to authorize the funding, but.
Well, in other words, if it can be in this fiscal year for next year, I think. That would be good because then we're not. Putting it online for local when we don't have local candidates.
Local candidates probably still be filing some campaign finance reports, right, as they'll be. Raising money and preparing for next year's. Election.
An interesting point that Donna is bringing up is that if we had it now. It would kind of force us to learn it this year while we only have a handful of people using it before we get flooded next year, so it might, that's.
But it's also in a presidential year.
It is.
All the question, any additional comments or questions, if not all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Have it.
I don't know what to. Sorry. I thought it was turned off.
So, uh, the next item is tied to the canvassing on Election Day. We, uh, as I said, we tripled the number of canvassers we used and. Auditing the process flow on Election Day, where we see bottlenecks is unfortunately me. Uh, we have all the people in place to do the work at the desk. I can't keep up with the number of canvassers, so we have a good chunk of the room sitting idle throughout the day. So, uh, there are two things we can do for that, we can bring in and. A trusted canvasser that's done it multiple times and let them take over a lot of what I'm doing, so if I get called out to handle something in the field, it work doesn't stop. Um, Stephanie Exarles filled in for us. On Election Day, she, I think she was happy to have something to do. So she ran the letter opener, but even doing that, uh, we have people sitting idle much of the time because we can't open mail fast enough and by law, we can't open it before seven A M. So we can't wrap ahead of time. Um, hopefully it'll change in the future, but no time soon. So we have a second letter opener that is no longer functional, it's a low volume letter opener, we have a high volume letter opener that is working great. And uh, one proposal that we could consider is if we purchase a second letter opener, we can divide the room in half. And have columns people and have a canvasser up here running this one, myself or another canvasser running the second one, and we'd be going a lot faster. Something to consider, uh, the. Sister device, the more inexpensive version of the device we already have is a smaller version that can be used in an office, it's not the size of a truck. If we were to purchase that, we could use it year round and not just on Election Day. But it would basically be the driving force here is we want to cut down the time on election data canvas, if we're gonna, if we've already. If adding triple the number of people that got us done by lunch, but we're going to double the number of ballots this time around, we're going to be working through. Through, well, right through the end of the day on Election Day. Uh, I'd like to see us get done a lot earlier, so we can all get out and do things in the field. Uh, the price on a letter opener is ten thousand dollars, if we go through the same. Vendor. It'll be rolled in, almost completely rolled in, maintenance costs into our existing contract. If we were to go through any other vendor, it adds a significant yearly additional cost, but. The vendor has the four ten model that we've been looking at for years, and I believe that was one of the models that they considered as a finalist. When they purchased the last letter opener, but they were sold out because it was after Act eighty-eight. And all across the state, every county was buying these gigantic letter holders all at once, so we ended up getting the only one we could get at the time. So, uh, it would be an approximate cost of ten thousand dollars. Five hundred dollar installation fee, delivery. Uh, for the year round device that we can wheel in on Election Day. So this is would, I wouldn't consider this, I'd go smaller if it weren't for canvassing, but this would make a big impact on getting it through the ballot. This is fully covered by the grant.
They can't emotion choose.
Second motion.
Are any other questions or comments?
What is the name of the grant?
The ele- election integrity grant.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's a second unit for, there's no staff backup.
And redundancy is nice. That's the other thing, we have no redundancy. This is not as fast as the one we have, but it's something we could use.
One, if the one goes down, we can keep going.
Yeah, at least we'd have some.
Any additional questions, comments? Here none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Significantly larger conversation is the e-poll books. So in our spring election, we did try out the, or I'm sorry, fall election, we tried out.
Are you skipping?
Oh, I did sort of, sorry. We we can, we can back up a second. We do have a number of small, small dollar items uh that we're looking at. We have to replace vote packs, the privacy shields. Uh, they just break when we're out, uh, and we haven't bought any in years, so we're down a good number of those, we we're looking at. About sixty units to replace, that'd be a few extra, plus replacing the ones that are broken. That's at a cost at about twenty-five dollars a unit, so total cost around fifteen hundred bucks, a pretty low dollar. Uh, that is something we really need to do, though. I mentioned it as a separate conversation discussion piece here because something that we use uh on a trial basis. Is something called the Ben Franklin voting booths in the fall, we were able to get four of them to trial. Uh, they were well liked in the field, they are, those voting booths are a thousand dollars a piece. But they're a four topper unit, and they're not just one. And the interesting thing is, they replaced that table by Bob. There. So that table is our ADA voting booth. And uh, Bob, will you give it a little shake for me? Yeah. That's the table that we put the the express votes on to vote and for wheelchair access for voting. They're aided by pollsters. To the point that in many polling places, the poll workers don't even get them out because they can't figure out how to assemble them. Uh, now, it's only. Two pieces in the box, you think it wouldn't be hard to put together, but it's it's a logic puzzle, they are difficult to put together. Many polling places have just foregone, forgot, they just don't use them, they they set them on a table somewhere. The 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 uh express votes in a table somewhere in the polling place. I completely, as a poll worker myself, I completely understand why they do that, but the problem is that is wheelchair access, and that's why we have it. So if they don't put it on the right table, we're completely defeating the purpose of it. Uh, the Ben Franklins have an eighty, one of those. Uh, one of the four units there is designed to hold that exact piece of equipment. And uh, is wheelchair accessible.
So you had them out here last selection, they were red, white, blue, they were very attractive.
They're really a slick. Piece of investment, they're they're nice. But they're expensive, a thousand bucks.
How much?
A thousand. To replace those, which we have to replace a number of them because they're broken, uh, they were talking about two fifty. Uh, so it comes down to. They're junk, we hate them anyway. There's probably another solution, we don't have to go with the Ben Franklin, that is a higher solution, but by adding the Ben Franklin, we get three other voting spots. Out of the same unit, the other stuff we're looking at, it's just a different version of that table, so we get one in space. So the four places that use them all really like them. Um, we have requests from judges for eight more. And that's it. So we we're not talking like we're buying one for every polling place, it would be. There's eight people that are looking at them, I think that's reasonable, as long as they're using it the way it's designed and we're replacing these. And then as these continue to break, maybe we consider continuing to add those. Or if we find another solution, I'm hoping that too down the road, this would be for the presidential year.
So requesting uh uh approval for eight at this time?
Eight Ben Franklins and six.
And six sixty vote packs, yes. Well, I'll make a motion uh for the sixty units of vote packs and the eight Ben Franklins as requested.
Second, any questions, comments? Any none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Alright. And then the poll pads. So in the fall, we did a um. A trial, we did twelve precincts of the sixty. We did six E S and S, six no ink. The platforms in from an ops point of view on my end have a lot of similarities behind the scenes, but they look dramatically different, they work pretty differently in the field. Uh, overall, it was a very successful trial, we had no issues whatsoever, no ink, uh, they worked exactly as advertised, we had a lot of very good feedback, we did a survey. Q R code survey, the feedback was excellent, uh, from the knowing ones. E S and S in. One precinct in particular, North London Dairy East. Had issues. Uh, they were, they slowed, they worked great all day, and then at five P M. They started to slow down, they had to be rebooted. But the people in the polling, the poll workers never informed us that they were slowing down or having any issues, so they just operated without rebooting them or without. Doing anything, and they were going very, very slow, meaning that you hit a letter, it would be like two, three seconds before the letter would appear on the screen. Old school computer issues, you don't really see anymore, but. And it was an easy fix. But, and since there's there's been a patch, so it doesn't happen on the ones that are patched anymore, but all that said, there was an issue. Uh, the price points for the different vendors are almost the same. Uh, the no ink. Ops wise is easier for me to use.
Is that Apple based?
It is, that's the Apple based one. What, uh, it was brought to my attention now, and it's funny, I like to hear it from one spot and then hear it from five spots. Oh, uh, all at once, one thing that I, a bit of feedback I got and started asking about it, all of a sudden I got it a lot of other places, people didn't realize that we sent styluses out. So people could sign with a pen. Uh, when you sign with a pen, it's like you're signing with a pen on paper, you can't see the difference whatsoever, if you sign with your finger, it's just like in the grocery store. It's usually pretty right, but sometimes it's not quite right, especially if you use hand cream. Which is the same problem that machine has right there, if you use hand cream before you go to hit your votes on this touchscreen, so it doesn't quite work great. Um, so that was a lesson learned, and I thought was obvious when we told them, they're siluses and we, they're fluorescent green and we give them the styluses, and they would hand the styluses to the voters, but they didn't. So we'll take care of that if we would move forward. But. I will say that E S and S has been an amazing partner. For county, I love their service, their whole. Team is amazing to work with. But when looking at the actual product side by side, no ink had no issues whatsoever. And E S and S did have issues. That. Said, uh, I would recommend moving forward with them, from an ops point of view, it was a massive change in how we do things post-election, it was huge. We take three weeks, seven hours, uh, two weeks, seven hours a day, with three people. Manually entering in data, it took me fifteen minutes. To upload using the poll. That's. Massive. And no human error. It took it all out, and it just clicked, 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 and we were done. So that's what I was hoping to see, uh, in the no ink, well, I can say in both. Both location, both vendor locations, aside from. Two spots where E S and S was present, we saw the lines were. Less, uh, one to three minutes, mostly less than a minute waiting to sign it. So, very short. I was very pleased, it was everything we were hoping to get out of it.
So because of the volume that. You're going to be facing, I'm just, and I don't know where my colleagues are in this, but I I just. You know. Want to be sure that it's not going to be an additional uh slowdown. That it, did you feel, um, I didn't have any trouble at my voting area, it was very slick. But when you hear it's slowing things down and the volume's going to be double, uh, that's not a good combination, so.
It's not, uh, and that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to address actually by doing this, is to go faster. Outside of. I I hate to keep harping on this, but outside of the the handful of places that had issues with the E S and S, which they tell me have since been resolved, of course, they, of course, they tell me that. There were no issues with the no ink, it was, they were flying. So. I, when I was in the field, there were no lines checking anywhere. That had the full pads until I got to North London Dairy East and I walked in and the line was around the door and I walked in and said, what are you guys doing? That's when we found out that, oh yeah, they got slowed, uh, we probably should have said something.
And how would you, how would you respond to someone who raised question or concern about the system being able to be hacked into?
Of course, that that's the first thing that came up right when we first considered this, so. What's on these poll pads is not in any way connected to our voting systems, not in any way. All it is, is it's a list of voters, it's uh publicly available on the state website. Uh, all your voting history, everything is out there, for better or for worse, it's all, which we'll be talking about at the end of the meeting here. Uh, it's all available online. We take a chunk of that information that both parties, Republican and Democrat, purchase for about twenty dollars already on their own to use for direct mail pieces. And we in, it's just a spreadsheet, C S V. Name, address, signatures included. Um, and then if you have a record flagged for some reason, just like in the paper poll books, that says you have shown I D, it's your first time voting. You've already voted via mail, so you can't vote in person that day, those details are all public and they're all in your data file online. We grab that chunk out of there, we load it onto the poll pad. So it's nothing that isn't publicly available, and it's nothing that isn't, that's connected in any way to actual voting.
It's safe, it's it's actually the same thing you're doing now, but you're you're doing it manually now.
It's the exact, it's literally the same file, so we don't do anything new for the electronic poll, it's the same file that wasn't into David A. Smith for printing a poll books now, it's the exact same file.
Reduces human error and.
Dramatically.
So much more efficient in creating that.
Sean, I still have the same concerns I had initially. And that is that there is. The ability to connect to the internet. On the uh iPad, I love Apple, I have an Apple phone. Not only that, and I I hear you saying it's the same information, but to get that information. Whether you do it by hooking to our main computer or on a flash drive, and you request a new flash drive. If I come in to get the voter list, because you don't want me to infect. Everything.
Yeah.
I have the same concern. Hooking the iPads up to the main uh computer terminal that could go to the state. Any of our sixty-seven counties using this could infect the entire system. I'm not. A computer guru. But I know. The precautions you take to try and thwart any uh viruses. By requesting brand new in the package. Flash drives. And yet you want us to buy these so we have more things to hook up, I know it saves on labor. But if we get infected, we're going to lose everything.
So an interesting thing about how the, that they talk to each other. To we, they don't directly connect into the state database, which is interesting, they they kick out, so the database kicks out that file. That on an F T P site that sits out there, and it's just the. Address, you know, the name and address file. Uh, that sits out there and then David A. Smith or Phoenix or whatever. Printer wants to go grab that, will go grab that off the F T P site. With the state's permission, uh, and then use it to create their books. We're doing the same thing here, so the. Difference in. What, how, what your concern is, which is a great concern, but how that's addressed is. This isn't directly interfacing with the database, what the database is kicking out a file to a third, to a secure F T P site. And then that is going over to knowing and being loaded into their poll pads.
But you told us. That it will tell you if you've already voted, somehow it's interfacing.
Yes, and it does that, and so it does it at that point, so your record is flagged at the point we kick out the file, so it'd be right before the like, like immediately before the election. Uh, so then that file agenda, so the. The database is over here. The poll pad are over here. And then I'm taking the the file out of the database, I'm putting it on a third party spot. This is, this is severed. And then somebody, no ink in this case. And then somebody, no ink in this case, would grab that file or David A. Smith would grab that file and go use it over here. So at no point are these two units actually directly touching. After the election is over, what this is going to do is kick out a file that is tied to your voter ID. And the voter ID, it doesn't need to kick back everything in there. It's just a series of numbers. It's a text file. And those, that voter ID is going to be loaded in and I'm going to create a file just with that, nothing else in it. And that will say any, and no ink will know that this list is nothing but people who voted on election day. Then I'm going to give that to the F T P site over the, at state. And then the state's going to grab and inspect the file. And then they're going to take it and they're going to put it into their data file and it's just that list of numbers. So at no point did like the system actually touch.
To me, that's the same as a flash drive. Um, the, any virus can be transmitted. I am not convinced. I mean, I, I use electronics a lot. But we're talking about democracy and our presidential race. I don't want, a, a, and it's not just me. It is convincing the public. There's a lot of people that do not like maybe it's fun to sign your name, but they don't like the electronic interface. And even though it's not direct, it will happen eventually. I, I'm still not on board with it.
Well, no, Kermit, yes. I was trying to get a question.
Simple question, and you might have been addressed, but let me just ask it specifically. So, um.
Would you, would you introduce yourself?
I'm Kermit Bell. Anything else?
Kermit. And you, you're, where you live?
Um, Palmyra.
Thank you.
Um, so, so my, uh, so when I, uh, when I vote up on their township rate, it's this, the sign, it's a very, it's very quick process. Do you have any sense whether, um, using a computer, the, the iPad, whether the device is, is the same, takes about the same amount of time, takes longer?
Well, what other, so we, we aren't finding ears here. These are all over already in other counties. Um, no ink has, I don't know what the count is. I should know. I can't remember what the count is. But they have a number of Pennsylvania counties. B S and S only has a few at this point. Uh, the other counties in, that have used it have all expressed about thirty percent speed increase in checking on election day. And that, that's one of the things that grabbed my attention when we first were looking at it. I said, really? And where that speed increase comes is if you type just three letters of your name, the first three letters of your name, it instantly pulls, almost always pulls you up specifically. And then if you um have a few people with a similar first three letters, it's right there. So it goes, the checking process. I did it for years, you know, you, you're going through the book and could you say that again? Could you say that again? And then pay, and you're going back and forth and it's not long when you do it by paper, but it's a, a minute. And if you type in the three first letters, it's a few seconds. So that, other counties have all reported about thirty percent increase in speed. And that's why I was a little disappointed with what happened in North London Dairy East because we kind of filed the results for everything else because everyone else had a pretty good, almost everyone else had a pretty good darn good experience. And then that one spot, it got real slow. Uh, but it had nothing to do with the checking process. It was just, it was basically a data, data issue in the back.
That's good. I just, there's so much technology and detail. It comes with the situation.
Oh, yeah.
So, so thirty percent sounds impressive to me.
Yeah, if it, so our concern, actually where we saw the no ink deployed, our concern was not with the sign in on, on the pads. It's that we don't have enough voting booths. Because we're, we're going a little bit faster and if we're used to, precinct has, say, six voting booths and we're speeding up by that much, we actually need to add more voting booths, which is what we just voted on, vote packs. We'll be able to replace the broken ones and add more voting booths to accommodate the people already at the line pass.
Thanks.
Eight bucks, South London Dairy also, huh? I was just curious. So this gets rid of the A through K and the L through M lines and all that, right?
And Yeah.
That gets rid of that, correct?
In, in fact, that's where we find the speed increase. Uh, that's another thing from my time in the polling place is you, I, I was usually the A through K guy.
Yeah.
And, and somehow the line would form on the other side and then I'd be sitting there idle. Here you have the polling pads, uh, they all work together. So you can go to any line and you don't have a line one particular letter.
Are you expecting at each polling station?
Uh, so that is a great question. Um. I was going to match the number of books. And best practice from other counties said, don't do that. Because you have an increase in Sweden sign, signing in, if you have three books, you really need to. And you're still going to be faster. Uh. I, I he, I like to keep things the same for workers as much as possible.
That's going to make you speed.
Right, it changed. People don't like change.
Yeah.
So if there was a place that was adamant about having three books, I was just going to go with three pole pads at that location, but the, both vendor and other counties keep telling me, don't, just that's a waste. So if we were to invest, uh, if we were to estimate in about sixty plus extras uh, for in case something goes down or replacements or just in case, uh, where we would probably, what I would probably do is take, there's quite a few that we only need one. And then I would take that one extra and have it available to the high volume precincts. Uh, but two should be adequate, but there'll be a third, you know.
Like cut down our worker, our worker.
Very, it's to be nice.
Sean, do you have a specific recommendation?
As much as I enjoy working with the S and S and a great services they give us, I can't deny that knowing product was superior. Uh, uh, from an ops point of view, it completely changed how we do post-election stuff. Uh, it was fantastic. Um. To go back to follow best practice from other counties, it'd be a hundred and twenty-five of these units. That would cover two per precinct with a few extra, which is good to have. Uh, the cost for a total package would be two thirty-one, five hundred the first year. That would be all the equipment upfront, training and everything. Um. And that would have a set for the spring. It would, um, everything would be delivered in time for the spring. I would recommend going with knowing. I, I know that us, no Joan's concerned about security. Um. I'm confident that given the air gap between our voting systems and these poll pads, that it won't affect voting at all, which is my primary concern. And the way the data is passed between the systems, I feel very confident that that'd be safe too. Uh. I'd recommend going with the knowing system for this ring.
Just two questions. Uh, this, two would be under the grant though. It's a big number.
This is a big number, but it's all a hundred percent under the grant. And while I didn't do this by design, I promise I didn't. This works out to be almost, almost the same amount of money we spent on the run back system under the same grant. So we have the same cushion to cover our other expenses for the rest of the year.
And the second question before I make a motion to do this, uh. Is there any evidence of these viral issues that in your colleagues that have already field tested these things that is? I mean, I just want to hear, is that, is that an issue that is, you know, real out there?
Which is, I'm, I'm
I'm referring to the virus.
Uh, no, there have been no, there have been no attacks. No, that, nothing.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we did the purchase of these uh poll books. Okay, motion on the floor. There was second.
Seconded?
Second. Other questions, comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Forward. Thank you. Continue.
All right, uh. I have important upcoming dates for all of you. There's a lot of them. Uh, first I already mentioned was prevent and make preventative maintenance week. I've said about the low seven. Uh, that's two twelve to two sixteen. We're going to have a small army of people between our two vendors here. Then the end of February, I don't have a date yet. There's a lot of variables there. We're going to have to get together for a ballot review and approval. Unfortunately, that doesn't time with pre-scheduled commissioners meeting, so we'll have to talk about that when we get there. Um, L and A testing right now pending the approval of the ballot at the end of February is the week of March fourth through eighth. And that would give us a target date for dropping mail for mail-in ballots. The middle of March, right around three fourteen, maybe a little sooner if we're lucky. Well, poll, poll worker training, three twenty-five and twenty-six, and then a week later on Monday, the first and second. Registering to vote is uh going to be closed on April eighth. And the last day to request a mail-in ballot is April sixteenth. I'd like to focus on that last date there for a second. One thing that did happen in twenty twenty-three is that twenty twenty-two, we saw about a three-day delivery time of mail-in ballots. In twenty twenty-three, we saw about a seven, four to seven days the window, but it's leaning towards the seventh day. Uh, that's out of my, that's completely out of my hands, uh, and it's very frustrating. Uh. Especially this window here, four sixteen. That is one week before the election and if it stays the same and we have a one-week delivery time on mail-in ballots, we always have a handful of people are coming in there at the end. Uh. So we will instruct staff on the phone or talking to people in person if they're putting it in on this day, please pick it up. Uh, because we don't want blame to you. If they don't get it in time. There's a lot of talk I hear from people who are involved in this process of moving registration up to election day or mail-in ballots even later. I don't know how to do that with the system. But I guess people making more money than I are going to have to figure that out in time if they want to. But then election day is still currently the twenty-third. While the board was on a nice year-long vacation.
Yeah, right.
Uh.
Worked our butt off.
There was a lot of talk of moving it up, a lot. Uh, thank, thankfully that did not happen while I'm, I understand their concerns and reasons for wanting to move it. Uh, it was simply too late, so we are sticking to the twenty-third. Post-election, we usually meet the Friday after the election for computation. I'd like to at this time move it to Monday, so almost a week after the election. The reason being we are looking at a huge increase in number of provisionals uh, and military ballots. We're looking at potentially, based on historical data across the state, a two thousand percent increase in military gallery list. We need time to process that stuff. And if we go from about thirty percent turnout rate to eighty-eight percent turnout rate, that's going to be proportional for provisional ballots. In fact, they'll probably be even higher than proportional because it would be people that are showing up that haven't voted in four years. Maybe they're no longer registered. Or maybe they never were registered, but they've seen a lot of TV commercials and they're showing up to vote. So we're expecting a huge spike in provisionals. I don't see how Suzanne gets through those in two days, the time for computation. So we'd like to push it back at least until Monday. We checked the statutes on this. We are flexible. We can make it even later if we have to. So our goal will be to get all your provisionals ready for you on that Monday with the understanding that if we can't, we'll just have to revisit some of them at a, at the later meeting. And that later meeting right now is five, three, ten A M. And that would be military ballots, outstanding provisionals, any outstanding issues at that point. So there are dates for now. I'm sure we'll be popping into a commission meeting before then and talk about other things, but uh, some things to watch out for in the next year is, uh, of course, Michelle's moving on. Really going to miss her. She's been amazing, even though she hasn't been there very long. We are, uh, starting to interview this week. People, we have a lot of resumes, not a lot of good candidates yet, but we're lining up. We have a few that we think might be very good matches, so hoping to get them in here today or tomorrow or Wednesday. Uh, something that we've been dealing with for a long time are the dishonest, dishonest mail pieces. And there's one I want to call out right now because we've had reports of this particular mail piece other years, but this is the first time we got a hard copy of it. Uh, voters in our area are getting a mail piece from a third-party group that says, here is your voting record, and it is their voting record, says, uh, their full name, address, gives the election. Did they vote in person or not? Uh, and it goes back, I don't, it's three or four, I'll pop ahead of you. Remember it was three or four elections. And then it says, uh, we are, we are sending the same message to all your neighbors. We're going to be checking in with you in six months to make sure you voted. Uh, we last year had complaints from people who said, what is this and why, how dare you send me this? And of course, we would not send you that. Uh. It comes across as vaguely threatening. And the first person to send us a copy of this was in English as a second language voter, Mount Retna. Uh, professional saw this and wanted, and we use those words. I feel threatened by this. Uh, so it is a group out of D C operating with a P O box out of Harrisburg, Seventh Street. Um. They are not violating the law as far as we can tell, this mail piece, but.
Did you bring it to show us or do you have the name of the group?
I can share it with you, the online. Uh, we, we have a, a poor scan of the letter, unfortunately. They, we got a scan of it and then it was tossed. And last year we had a handful of people who all reported the same, literally the exact same letter, but every one of them, well, I threw it away. So, um, but we have the group's info in D C. Uh, I have no idea. Party or anything, not that it matters to me, but uh, but it's, it does feel shady. I'm not a big fan. I'm sure we're going to, this is only the first of many that we're going to be hearing complaints about this year. Uh, get out the vote efforts, which is what the, the group says it is. If you go to their website, it's a get out the vote effort. Be aware that you may come across those and be assured that we will not, as an office, be sending anything like that to anybody. Already the, uh, the applications are going out, fake applications are going out. People have been getting them for months now. Uh, that look like they're coming from my office. They are not, though they are still valid. Interesting. So if you, if see, somebody shows you an application that looks sketchy, it doesn't, it probably is. But it doesn't mean we can't use it. If it captures all the same information, there's the signature and date and address and they fill in all the information that we require to register, it's still valid. We can still use it.
May brainstorm, uh, uh, options to with the cooperation of our local medias to, to create more awareness of this.
Yeah.
I think there may be some options there.
Uh, Kermit Bell. So we encounter, do you want to speak for?
I would like
Examples of those things to your office.
Yes, please. If nothing else, I'd like to get a better scan. If I had a better quality picture or scan, I would pop, I, I've already sent it to the press and I would have it up on our website as a warning too, but it's just so fuzzy.
You have one.
Uh, would be a very much interest to me to know if these are targeted in a particular way, these mailings. I suspect.
To a party or something of that nature.
The demographic of party. I, I haven't seen it enough yet to, enough of them to get a pattern here.
Okay, anything else?
So I, I don't know if you, you have anything else for me. That's what I had been down things to cover. There are, there's future business you have for a future meeting. Um. But that's what I have discussed.
I just even, I, I, I did want to bring up discussion about the Dropbox. Uh, and I'm, with the motion to eliminate the Dropbox and that. So, um, I guess we can do that, get it on the floor and then we can get a second. There's a second.
Not in favor of doing the drop.
Well, I'll second the motion just to get it on the floor. This is something, you know, I want to comment on that away. Uh. When I learned shortly after I got appointed that, that, that was an option, I didn't know it was, but wasn't it some of the When I learned shortly after I got appointed that, that, that was an option, I didn't know it was, but wasn't it some of the county, some world with me? It's something I was in favor of initially, but in talking to Sean about that, that Sean made me wanna.
There's a lot, there's a lot to cover here, just numbers-wise. Would you like to address any?
Logistically, you know, and people coming.
There's a, I, I, I am very aware, in fact, there's a political part of this discussion, and there's a, a ops part of this discussion, and from the ops side, our Dropbox is right outside our door here, but particularly right outside the security. So we have about three thousand, a little more than three thousand people are dropping mail, ballots through the Dropbox out of about eight thousand.
And I, I believe most of those people that do it say they have more confidence in bringing it here in person than putting it.
We have a lot of people that are very, they, they don't have a lot of confidence in the postal system. And unfortunately, the experience of the last year has not reassured anyone with ballots going out so slowly. What I didn't mention is we also have a lot of ballots that get returned to us as undeliverable. And we know we have perfectly valid, good addresses, and then they bounce back to us. And it might take, they go out, they come back to us, it could be two weeks turnaround. And we only have five weeks or so before the election, and then we're calling the voter, trying to figure out, why did this bounce back? And it's the correct address, and usually we just drop it in the mail, and then it does go through, but if that, not always, but if that's potentially three weeks at that time, it's okay if you're the, if you are pre-registered before the election, requested that ballot, because you have about five to six weeks, it still gets to you on time. But in the meantime, you're mad because you think you should have your ballot, and you're calling us, and we're telling you, we sent your ballot, and we're tracking it, we can see it's in the mail, but we don't know exactly where it is. Anyways, all of that's out there, and people know that. So there's not a lot of faith in the postal system for the delivery of ballots, unfortunately. Now, there's some great people working for the local post office here. I enjoy working with them pretty much and trying to figure some of this out, but the case is the case. The Dropbox is a way that they can drop those off and at least eliminate half that equation. From my ops side of the conversation, by having it outside the security check-in, it's, somebody can get out of their car, drop off their ballot, and not have to come up through security to get in line. So we are expecting down-the-hall lines at our offices, starting in about four weeks, well, five weeks. At that point, people that would be coming in to drop off their ballots are getting in a forty-five-minute line outside my office. I need to figure out some way to take care of that. So if we have temporary staff, maybe we could work the hallway, walk up and down the line, say, are you just here to put people like it that way? Could have a ballot depository inside. Maybe, I mean, there are ways that we could try to compromise and figure this out if we have to, but the ballot box, as is, just eliminates that as an issue, so. We, I am expecting, let's see, I have four, four thousand, forty-five hundred ballots to go Dropbox in this spring election.
I'd also like to point out that in addition to everything Sean has said, if it's raining and the floors are wet, there is that slip and fall, public safety, our floors are immaculate, and still we have some slips and falls, number one. And number two, the majority of those three thousand people would take the elevator up and down. That's extra wear and tear on our elevators. It, it, the list goes on, but why force them to come into the office when our Dropbox fills all of these wonderful missing pieces when it comes to USPS versus coming into the building? And then finally, our staff is overwhelmed already for them to be able to sit down and open all of those with the mail opener or whatever and process. Well, they can't really open them yet, but whatever they have to do, process them, sort them alphabetically or by precinct, whatever they have to do with them. They can do that without having to interact, and, and they wanna interact with the public, but it's just overwhelming for a small staff when they already have a forty-five-minute line. To eliminate that post, well, not postal, but it looks like a post office, Dropbox, but to eliminate our Dropbox would just add multiple layers of complication to this election that we don't need. And so I truly believe in our Dropbox.
I, I could offer perspective from other counties. If this conversation was two years ago, it'd be a lot different. Since then, there have been counties that successfully have eliminated Dropbox. Successful meaning that they aren't currently in court. So that might not have been the case two years ago. But now it is. So you had, I was very shocked that York eliminated theirs. Lancaster has eliminated theirs. Other counties have expanded them. And ours, for someone reading the story that might not know, we only have a single Dropbox right now, and it is right outside our courthouse door. That's a little different than some other counties that have a remote Dropbox that make it convenient for someone that's not close to the courthouse. So we have a different strategy. Since the beginning, it sounds like you guys have used the same one, but it's worth noting that there have been other counties that have successfully eliminated, so. Question right here, we got one.
This has been probably the number-one source of suspicion over the years, as far as people, because once, once somebody approaches that box and puts a ballot in it, there's really no way, we're not monitoring that you may say that we have security inside, but there, the people inside aren't watching and can't really detect whether somebody puts more than one ballot in. And once that ballot, once that transaction happens, you have no idea who, who did it, were they mixed with everything else in there? There's no way of, of following up. And it just seems like that is a, you know, people talk about integrity in, in the voting and, and trying to make it as fair and honest. One vote per person and all those things. This is, to me, a symbol of a potential problem that you can't, you can't control, you know, because you're counting on people walking up to the box, doing what they're supposed to do, and putting in one ballot, and there's no way of, of really proving that they have not put in more than one. And I think that's, that's my main, the complaints that I get is the security of it, and we did try to bolster that with cameras and, and signage, but it's still still has the gap from, you know, a complete, you know, I'll say fraud-free experience.
That was my, an observation when, when we talked some time ago about installing the cameras that initially felt better about that, but the more I thought about it, well, we can actually see it, but now it's already in there, and with the other ballots, so that it's a problem for me.
We would like to counter with the fact that we have special signs telling people that they can only drop their own right at that box. We have a camera to identify, many cameras on the buildings too, but cameras to identify who is dropping. But even more than that, when you look at a regular United States post office box, none of that exists, and we have the security people inside the building watching as well. But at a mailbox, there is none of this. Again, this is so superior to a United States Postal Service mailbox. And in eliminating the kinds of things you're concerned about, that's where it really happens. And, you know, with the education we've been doing, it keeps getting better at the Dropbox. The post office boxes, not so much. I really feel that this Dropbox is the best situation for our voters, the safest, the most comprehensive, and saving our staff wear and tear, as well as the building.
I'm Tricamo, living in city. I haven't heard any discussion about how eliminating that Dropbox is going to affect handicapped people. You're talking about waiting in line for forty-five minutes, but a handicapped person takes them five minutes to pull in and drop their, their ballot off. If you eliminate that, handicapped people are gonna have to go down the ramp if they know the ramp exists, go down the ramp through the building, get to the elevator to get upstairs. You've taken a five-minute process and turned it into a half-hour process for people who already are having difficulties getting around.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just made one comment. Joel, and you said about the sign on the box telling them they can only do one drop. But I don't know if you know, we have a Dropbox over here that we got from the city for tax payments. And of course, everybody knows the city parking fines would go into that box before. We have signs on it, let me count, treasure, we have signs on no parking tickets, and what do we get? We get more parking tickets than tax payments. So they do not read the signs, I'm sorry.
Well, that, number one, is far away. Number two, they're used to doing it, the city moved out. I mean, there's other issues going on there. That's in a separate location. I, I, I acknowledge your concern about the similarities, but I see many dissimilarities, if you will. I, again, I, I can't restate enough that the existing ballot box in its current location and it's taken in between elections, there's no tampering with it. We, and it's locked up at night, it's only open during business hours. You don't have all of that with a United States Postal Service mailbox. We have so many extra security measures on this Dropbox, above and beyond. And we don't have satellite ones that aren't following all of these guidelines. You know, we set the standard high. Our bar has been higher than many other counties, and I think we can be proud of what we produced. And I, I, I fully support it.
I'm not out of line in saying, it can be true that this is obviously a political lightning rod, the Dropbox. It absolutely is. There's a, a relatively small but vocal group who are very concerned, I can appreciate that. But it also is more secure than no box.
A hundred percent more secure.
Is it a federal offense to to violate the, the lockbox or the Dropbox? As, as it would be if you do it with the post office?
With regard to our Dropbox, I think that would be a mistake of them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, we, we have to rely on the post office as it is what it is, but that's you know, people that choose to use paper ballots or mail ballots, I think that's they, they know what the game is when they sign up for mail ballots, and so that's, but I, that Dropbox is not part of Act seventy-seven, and it, it's just become a focal point of, of concern, and I thought you know, eliminating it gets rid of one more issue that people have with the integrity issues with that voting, so.
Go ahead.
I just wanna say, right now, there is really no line between our law enforcement. They are working in tandem, whether it's Homeland Security, the FBI, the state police, they are all working together. They're gonna, they're gonna descend upon anybody that tries to pull a fast one. I don't think that we should have any fears of our Dropbox.
Conversation for now, summarize that, that we've certainly hear the concerns on both sides of the issue. I'll call for a question in a minute, and, and if in fact, we do decide to eliminate that, we're not done with this issue. We're gonna have to figure out operationally how we manage them, not because the last thing we wanna do is create a line and, and, you know, people waiting forty-five minutes, that, that, that would be viewed as suppressing. You know, too, so we need to, to address this. So anyway, last chance, look.
I just wanted to ask Sean, because you did say the counties that successfully, in quotes, air quotes, eliminated the Dropbox are all in court.
But Lancaster was. I don't believe that.
Were, were these, were these challenges from the public?
Yes.
Against the removal of the box?
Yes.
Okay.
Lancaster was in the place. I remember where the, I, I don't remember.
Matt, do you wanna? I, I did, yes. Okay, Laura, you brought up an important point that I, I did wanna get into the discussion, so we can see. Act seventy-seven.
Would you introduce?
Oh, yeah, Matthew Beuklen, county supervisor.
Welcome to the team, Matt.
Thank you. So Act seventy-seven obviously made a lot of changes, and, and the language, the, the relative language pertaining to the return of ballots states, "The elector shall fill out, date and sign the declaration printed on such envelope. Such envelope shall be secured and sealed, and the elector shall, by then, send by mail, postage prepaid, accept, work, bring or deliver it in person to said county for election." This was enacted in the latter part of twenty nineteen. Obviously, in twenty twenty with the COVID pandemic, there was a, a large push to encourage individuals to, to utilize vote by mail. So in the summer of twenty twenty, one of the major political parties here in Pennsylvania filed what is called a declaratory judgment, where it essentially seeks clarification from the state court regarding whether or not a county can utilize, can accept ballots other than at a location behind, behind the, the counter, if you will. So what happened was, in the, in the fall of twenty twenty, in the run-up to the presidential election, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court issued a ruling and stated that the election code should be interpreted to allow county boards of election to accept hand-delivered mail-in ballots at locations other than their office, including drop boxes. There are many counties, it appears in, in some of my research, that counties outside of Philadelphia, Montgomery, Chester County, that have in some cases ten to twelve locations. I know Dalton County has a location in the upper portion of their county. So the, the ability of a county board of elections to have a Dropbox was something that it, there was some ambiguity whether the, the election code via Act seventy-seven allowed it. The courts clarified it in twenty twenty, and, and so that's where the authorization to have these locations came from. As far as a requirement from the state, there is no, this would fall within the purview of the discretion of the Board of Elections, whether to have a Dropbox, whether to not have a Dropbox. We, Sean brought up Lancaster County, we discussed that, and it ended up where there was a challenge that was brought, but it was more of a, of a procedural challenge that the decision to, to eliminate the Dropbox was not procedurally done correctly, and it ended up where that was rectified, and Lancaster County no longer has the Dropbox anyway. So as far as challenges to it, if, if, if the decision is made today to eliminate it, I, I think that falls within the discretion of the Board of Elections with regard to, so looking at other counties, I, I believe that this is something that, like I said, the the Department of State recognizes, it is in the discretion of each individual county, whether to have a Dropbox or to not have a Dropbox.
So does that eliminate the superseding decision that the state Supreme Court made that they could have them?
Well, it's that, the Supreme Court's decision gave discretion to the county boards of election. Didn't, didn't mandate a Dropbox, didn't absolutely require it. If, if the, the language was, it should be interpreted to allow them. So if they want one, they can have it. If not, then they're under no requirement from the state to have one.
What, what Matt is, well, what is in your mouth, but, but what Matt is, is describing here is there's such a breadth of of ways that counties can approach this, that this one topic, that is a big lightning rod, which I can't stress enough, I can appreciate that, because I hear it too. It, it's hard to describe what we do in Lebanon County as being the same as what Chester County does, which is dramatically different, or some other counties do. It's, but it's all drop boxes, you know, in air quotes, but they're so different. Chester Counties is fascinating in how they do theirs. They rent tractor trailer, half, half container trucks, and they set them up as mobile offices around the county, and they have generators in them. And at eight-thirty in the morning, they open up the back, and they pull the generator, and they have a desk that rolls out on wheels with an umbrella over it to shield you from the elements, and someone sits at the desk all day in a parking lot. They're all over the county They're all over the county with power and wifi and whatnot. And they just sit next to the open box all day and people pull up and they say, thank you, may I have your ballot and your ballot only? And they take it and they put it in the box. That's versus what we have, which is just one box. We, that's unstaffed, but it is under camera in the Sheriff's Department right down there. Versus what now Lancaster is doing, which is no box. It, it, there's a pretty big difference there. That I'm not the one voting, see, guys, but that will make it work.
And if, for example, if I just devil's advocate for a moment, if I would, if I were bringing in my, as a registered voter, my mail-in ballot and my husband had the flu that day and I brought his. So we're married, we're both registered voters.
You can do that if you have a, there's a special.
Oh, but I, I'm saying, if, if, if a person just said, oh, for goodness sake, give it to me, I'm gonna take it and put it in. What, what would be the sanction if it was discovered that I, I, you know, made that grievous error?
Laura, you bring up some way, a way that our state differs from most other states that do this. In our code says you and you own, that's it. Other states say you can bring in usually a member of your household. I don't know why we're, we're the outlier on that, because that would basically eliminate this problem if that language was adjusted. But at the state level, that talk about lightning rods, that's a big lightning rod too. But we, we are, we are where we're at, but you, you are correct. You cannot bring in your spouse's ballot.
But if, if you found out that I did because we got a camera and you see that I deposit two things and you, and I, and I even confess, I put my husband's in as well, what would be the sanction?
Well, from my office, I just refer that then to the district attorney. And it's up to her to take the next steps. Like for me, from my office point of view, is I can't take it. I stop you. If you're trying to hand it to me in the office, boy, there's an awkward conversation when, when they come up. We say, I'm sorry, I can only take the one. You have to take the other with you. I hate that. But beyond that, I, my office doesn't have any kind of prosecutorial or binding ability. We just refer to the DA. And if you look in the national news in areas where they, where this is an issue, local DAs do go after people for this stuff. They can. Where Georgia is the source of a lot of these stories, where they did try to go after people for, in Georgia, they found they were all actually not violating the law. It was all drug-depositing family members. But here, we don't have that provision.
But we do have the form that allows it. And I think we need to educate people on that, that if you are in a household where someone cannot make it, you could carry it in and drop it in the Dropbox if you have that form attached.
And that's a form that predates mail-in balloting. It goes back for a long way. It's just a standard affidavit form that gives you permission to carry someone else's stuff.
And it is on the voter registration website.
It's on our website.
I, I think we're ready to call a question. I motion for to eliminate Dropbox as it is put down. Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are you opposed?
Aye.
So we'll do that, but Sean, I would encourage you and I will help when Jamie returns. And we need to sit down and talk about operationally how we're gonna manage this more, more efficiently. If that Dropbox was, and we could even look at our other alternatives to possibly place it somewhere else that's more closely monitored or something like that.
They did just take each other out. This might have happened. We already have a few things that we could, we can address whenever you're comfortable moving forward with that conversation.
It's gonna cause issues eliminating.
So we could maybe set that as a meeting agenda item for the next commission meeting. There's no, it'll take time to get all the stuff in place if, if we have to come up with a Plan B. So, or since we're coming up with a Plan B.
Anything else to go to the order? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn. And adjourned.
Okay, we have adjourned the election board. Now we convene to finish up our items of of the agenda that are left for the public meeting.
Okay, I guess I'm done. Ready? Okay, go on, Felicio. I'm Deputy Chief Firth. I have a few things this morning. The first one that I have is two hotel tax requests. The first one is for the St. James Players. They are looking to partner with the Drunken Smithy to bring a two-day ferry festival to Lebanon. The festival will be held on April twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. And it would include vendors across Pennsylvania, blacksmith demonstration, food trucks, and a scene from Peter Pan, which would be held in the St. James Player Theater inside the mall. Pictures would think about the cast of Peter Pan, appearances of the fairy queen throughout the event, and a Peter Pan parade with a sword fight with Captain Hook and Peter Pan. They are looking for a total project of six thousand two hundred fifty dollars and they are asking for a request of five thousand dollars.
So make a motion to approve that request.
I'll second the motion, but I do have an observation. If you take twenty-five percent, I don't think this meets the twenty-five percent.
It does not.
And really, we should be consistent with that and treat everybody the same.
It would be forty-six eighty-seven fifty.
Six.
Eighty-seven fifty.
So I didn't know if you would consider amending your motion.
My motion to that amount, forty-seven eighty-six fifty.
And I'll second the motion.
It's removed. And second, any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All same signs, so move.
Okay, the next one I have is from the Pennsylvania Gourd Society. As you know, we've done this one before. We had some nice gourds hanging out there over Christmas that they sent us. But they are also having an event at the Expo Center. This event would be celebrating their twenty-second anniversary. And this brings artists, craftsmen's and enthusiasts to showcase the versatility of artistic potential gourds. This will be held June thirteenth to fifteenth. And they would be bringing in different people on different skill levels to instruct on what you can do, how you can grow gourds across the U.S. So their total project for twenty twenty-four is seven thousand six hundred dollars. They do have their match of twenty-five percent, therefore they're requesting fifty-seven hundred dollars.
Make a motion to approve the request by the Gourd Society.
Removed in second, any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so move.
Okay, the next thing I have is some appointments to the different gourds that we have. The first one I have is for the Lebanon Transit. We have three members whose terms are gonna expire at the end of this month. Alan Freed, Brenda Phillips and Patrick Kerwin. They all three have agreed to be reappointed for another three-year term, so their new terms will expire on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion go through.
Second.
It's removed in second and I'll acknowledge that Brenda Phillips is my spouse, but there is no beneficiary interest in the, in the issue.
Okay, and the next advice?
We need to vote.
Oh, yeah.
Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All same signs, so moved.
Okay. And the next one I have is for the Children and Youth Advisory Board. There's four board members whose terms are expired in December here. They've all agreed to serve another three-year term and their new terms will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. They are Donna William, Luis Roderio, Christina Slick, and Amy Custer. Slick, Slick.
I'll make a motion to approve the four reappointments to their board.
Okay, removed in second that we approve those advisory board members for children and youth. Questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so move.
And the only thing to note is there is a lady on the advisory board that is resigning. No motion needed, but it is Judith Weimer. She is resigning, so we will send her a thank you letter.
Very good.
Okay, and lastly, I have one disabled veteran. It is Paul Burkhart, Paul Myra. For real estate.
Make a motion to approve our exemption request.
And I'll second that.
It's removed in second that we approve that veterans' property tax exemption. Any questions regarding the motion? Do you need all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All same signs, so move. Entertain a motion or anything from the floor? Motion to adjourn. I'm sorry. Matt, this is-
Couple of questions. Do you want me to say who I am again?
You can waive that requirement.
Okay, I did not understand what this organization is that's having something about Peter Pan. What is it?
St. James Players.
What?
St. James Players, they're inside the Lebanon Valley Mall.
Oh.
Yeah, they do plays and they, they, they educate the youth of the county in the performing arts. It's a volunteer group.
And we're funding that?
It's on the hotel tax.
From the hotel?
To promote, to bring people in from outside the county to stay in the hotel rooms. And that's what feeds that for tourism.
So then, then if you don't go to a hotel, you're not funding it, is that right?
Not necessarily.
Well, then you are funding with what if you don't go to a hotel?
They also go to restaurants.
Those are where the funds come from.
Gas stations.
We have a fund that's generated on everybody and anybody that stays in a hotel.
Okay, but if you don't stay in a hotel, you don't have to pay it, right?
No.
Okay, there's no, no, if you don't go to a hotel, then none of your money is being used to fund this thing, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Stand in jury, thank you for your attendance.